I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first thing on the agendas, agenda, excuse me, the approval of minutes from the previous meeting. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any additions or corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye. Vote same sign. Motion carries. Approval of the bills. Questions?
We have one there over twenty-five hundred from five or six different invoices.
And we also have additional on the desk too.
Move to approve.
Okay, do we have a motion and a second to approve bills? Any further discussion? Any questions? Seeing none, roll call please.
Volk?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Ipa?
Aye. Motion carries. Financial reports. Anything out of the ordinary? Everything in line?
Yeah, we just have to do a transfer for the LEC.
Transfer reset? All ready?
Yeah, I think those three hundred.
So, basically what you're saying is we're already past our ten mil?
It's many of.
Yes. Nice.
We better start working harder in this market on this deal. Are we, need to state to turn you to, just close his ears and his eyes?
Don't do that. I'm just joking, obviously. Don't do that.
All right, so we've got to work for the next session. Because we've been parting on them for a few sessions that just a base, a base daily rate help would be very beneficial for us for counties that are well over that ten mil rate. You gotta really work on how.
I think the thought not initially was hopefully it would be better, but it's not.
No.
I think it's pretty obvious it's not. So we're gonna need some.
But you want to defund the police, then only anybody interested in doing that.
No. Okay. I guess I'd take a motion to approve the financials if everyone's okay with them. Okay, excuse me, we have a motion and a second to approve financial reports. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye. Vote same sign. Motion carries. Every member of this.
That's okay.
Don't even, okay, roll call always forget on that one. Uh, treasurer's checks. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the treasurer's checks. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye. Vote same sign. Motion carries. Agenda. Agenda in front of us with a couple of additions. From the wonderful Thursday.
I guess I would like to amend the agenda, include the support for the aquatic nuisance species awareness week.
Put that under the end of new business if that's okay with everyone. And next week. Okay, anything else to add to the agenda?
If we want to discuss the OLED advisory committee. That will take place on May eleventh, week from tomorrow, before we meet again.
Yeah, we should.
We can have a discussion on that. We could add that as well.
We'll put that at the end of new business then. I would take a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I'd approve, make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Okay, the motion and a second. All in favor, vote by saying aye. Vote same sign. Motion carries and the agenda is approved. Alright. Roger, morning.
Morning. I have two estimates here for additional blinds for the windows. One from Thompson's for thirty-one thousand one hundred and one from the flash shop for thirty-seven by seventy-two. I don't see any reason not to go with Thompson's.
Yes, I'd move there, accept a little bit.
Tagged.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to accept a little bit for shades from Thompson's. How much of the courthouse is this going to do, the whole thing then?
Yes, everything except for the ends where at the hall.
Okay, so this is just roller blinds basically in back of the cellular shades we have, so.
Probably that's going to be a front.
Oh, it's a front?
There's no roof or like that.
Okay.
So we're not removing anything, we're not adding.
No, we're just adding for some privacy, basically, correct? And this will come out of building. Okay, further discussion on accepting a little bit. Hearing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye. Vote same sign. Motion carries. Alright, so that's what you got. Thanks Roger, appreciate it. Chris, morning.
Good morning. Just want to bring up, because of all the current flooding we have within the county, that we look at signing a flood emergency disaster declaration. Basically so we can open up some of the local funds. I do know some roads are completely inundated, some, I don't for sure we have one washed completely out. If there's more, I guess Kevin might know, but we keep closing roads and we're gonna have to fix these roads, so it'd be a good idea just to get a disaster declaration clear locally and hopefully we'd get some state funds or federal funds later down the road.
I think there's many, many, many of them on the township system that I'm not even aware of.
I guess I would certainly and for those township individuals out there listening, watching, ask that they convey those closures that water over the road to not only McKevan, but Chris and Steve's not here yet, but nine-one-one dispatchers. If they have to respond to an emergency and come upon a road close that they weren't aware of, it's going to delay that response time for them and and so hopefully everybody's getting that information to the LEC and nine-one-one dispatch. You know, I think that's vitally important. So.
That's a good point, because I don't think we're aware of all of the closures.
And you said just visiting before the meeting, what, nine closures now on the county system, correct?
Nine that are actually closed, probably another half dozen are fenced off and holes.
Yeah, we can get around them with their
fenced off.
Going to need to be fixed when this is done. Yeah, yeah.
On our system, right, yeah.
And that's just on the county system?
We notified nine-one-one on that.
Right after we closed the meeting. You didn't call the sheriff or LEC. I mean, the door gets open anyway.
Because I'm not sure Highway twenty and seventeen, all right? Do you need blockage on those roads?
I haven't heard of any. Seventeen were.
All the way across the county.
Twenty by Webster would be the worst, the closest one.
Yeah, that close.
That's still, there's no longer, yes, yes.
I was gonna get ahold of Wyatt and see what that top of that elevation in south Webster, I can't remember if it's sixty-two or, but Morrison's right there, you know, it was sixty-one eight last evening, so I'm sure it's either pretty close or surpassed that sixty-two mark. And, you know, at that point, I think that Highway twenty gets pretty close, so would be an issue.
Looks like we're starting to go up or down, the water's starting to go down way up, but it's kind of peaked right now. Once in a while you see when we're in debris lines, the water goes over the debris line, not too many.
I think they're talking possibility rate coming this weekend again. We get more rate on top, we're gonna do this now. Before you need interest. Yeah. I don't think any rate we can get right now. Do we have a copy of it? I guess I want to have my this one, I'm sure, oh, it's good. Thank you. The question I always ask is, or always forget is allowing the declaration unlock some of our local funds, but then we have to get to a certain dollar figure for the federal funds possibly get unlocked, plus we need a statewide disaster, correct?
Dr. Kevin, I believe we surpassed already just on the few roads, we've well surpassed our local. Just on account of it's forty-seven thousand something.
Oh, that's it? A lot more than that. And we don't have, is the state done one yet?
The state has done the winter storm, we're waiting on one of the and I don't know if it's going to be divided one or just
With the funny one red, I'm sure the state will be there.
Okay. Yes, I would entertain a motion if there's any more discussion, I think.
Oh, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the flooding emergency disaster declaration for Ramsey County. Uh, any further discussion of questions on the declaration as it stands? Hearing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye. Vote same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Chris.
Thanks, Chris.
Anything else? Okay, grammar bank representatives, I don't think we had anybody here yet, do we? Okay, so we'll just move on. Brian, good morning.
So, went to an HR conference a couple weeks ago, went through a breakout session, basically called the free workplace. And we had a couple attorneys do a presentation. One is a rep attorney that, he's actually the executive director now for the Northwood Association of Counties. And then we got a gal, Amy, she's a legal consultant for the School Board Association. And it basically said, well, they, they said that pre-employment drug testing is, is illegal for non-safety sensitive employees in the argument of pre-employment drug testing at that time. And what it is, it's a fourth amendment right for public employees of unreasonable search and seizure of their person. So I started doing some more research, but I always want to ask you the question at the breakout session, just trying to get that clarified. And did some more research and, yeah, there was a lot of people that were sitting behind me like, really? You know, they suspended their drug testing until they you know, got the final the final result of their, their research, so, so we definitely need to suspend it at this time for pre-employment drug testing for non-safety employees, but the Sheriff's Department and the Highway Department, they would be considered safety sensitive because of the opportunity, every machinery, you know, driving vehicles all the time with, you know, high speeds, things like that, that's where the law enforcement. Um, this wouldn't change our reasonable suspicion drug testing, that still can continue. Random drug testing would continue with the two departments of the Sheriff's and Highway Department. Um, that was quite interesting to hear though. Saying that, there was a lot of people that were like, oh boy.
I got a question, isn't the safety of the public, isn't that sensitive safety? Whether you're running a piece of machinery or if you're in one of these offices in here, isn't that to the public?
According to the court.
How about like driving?
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Blaine, what do you do out there at that, camp route?
You're tested all the time.
You get tested all the work.
Well, we're still gonna have, we're still gonna have testing, it's just a matter of we can't do pre-employment for somebody that's not going to be safety sensitive, so some, anybody that wouldn't essentially, anybody that drives a vehicle still is going to be tested pre-employment.
They should, yes. I did consult with Alicia Bowman, she's on the, one of the HR people with Department of Human Services. They have discontinued it for their employees a few years ago. And they don't even say, they don't say they're sensitive or they don't pre-employment test most of their Department of Human Services employees.
So if you don't pre-employment test, once people are onboard, you can test after that?
If you have reasonable suspicion.
Reasonable random testing?
The only random testing you can do is for DOT, Highway Department and that must have been a change, that would have changed, that must have been done a handful of years ago, if not less. I don't know if we need a motion for this to change, but it's highly suggested that we just do the practice.
Well, it's part of our policy, yeah, it's part of our policy manual, correct?
Yeah, we're, there's a, like, we just gotta change one notation in there, one bullet point.
I think it, I think it would be reasonable that we have a motion from the commission since we're making a change to the employee man policy.
So.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to just make a change to the manual, or we're not gonna make change the manual currently, but just suspend that portion of the manual until we get further clarification. Yeah, further discussion on the motion.
One thing I might suggest is we should maybe list what safety sensitive is, like if they're driving like a county vehicle, is that safety sensitive or, and actually put that in writing. I mean, I get that question all the time, what am I guys?
They're driving a county vehicle, we want to test it.
Well, that's up to, that's up to you guys.
I think that would be a question for the state's attorney.
So generally speaking, just because you're behind the wheel doesn't necessarily meet that threshold. Ryan and I can talk through it and get something drafted for you, but it is unconstitutional to pre-employment drug test people, so we have to suspend it.
So basically we suspend it until you guys can get together, put together something for us on a change, and then we can look at that at an upcoming meeting then.
That sounds good.
One of the counties, they were random testing like the entire county too. And they were like, you know, they had suspended that until like yeah, it was kind of an eye-opening thing for all of us sitting in there.
I mean, I guess we want to make sure that we're doing things correctly so we don't give ourselves big liabilities.
Yeah, litigation.
Okay, further discussion?
Are there other departments that would transport the public, like social services?
Well, again, it comes down to if, if it's, if it's a reasonable or non-reasonable, post-employment, we can still test, it's just we can't do a pre-employment test. So if we have reasonable suspicion after post-employment, or like we do random testing for anybody that has a vehicle or in case of, in case of an accident, it's an automatic test. That portion of the policy will remain unchanged. We just can't use it as a, as a precursor and a prescreener essentially to, as a condition of employment.
Correct.
Okay, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye. Vote same sign. Motion carries. Okay, compensation study updates.
I really don't have much to add, there is data collection time and if any work from thirty to forty-five days. So they're reaching out to other employers, updating their data, they've had a little bit of a few workshops. But, right now, we're just kind of in our level, we're not holding there as they do the data collection, so. I do have a, we do have told them every two weeks. Um, I do have a, I'll schedule tomorrow with one of the reps. Um, you guys, I think we seem a little like a timeline calendar, so obviously that can change as it goes forward, but.
The, the question I would ask of you and I, yeah, actually was just busy with plane aboard before the meeting, is on this timeline, obviously, like you said, the timeline can change. Are they going to be able to give us some type of a reasonable expectation on possibility of changes come maybe by the time we set our preliminary budget, so we have some ideas if we wanted to try to get it included this year or not?
We, when we talked to them, they've been guaranteed, it really depends on if they can get the data collected, that's the the time-consuming thing, is getting cooperation from other employers.
Okay, so we're gonna have to basically just kind of play a by-year and we'll see what happens when the time comes. Okay. Not a reasonable, okay, any further questions for Brian? Anything else? Thank you, Brian, appreciate it. Okay, do we have to wait till eight-thirty since it says eight-thirty? I always, I always, I always ask that question because I don't know.
I think, I think we just put that, so. If you want to wait, we're missing Kate yet.
Oh, Kate's still supposed to be coming, okay, well, that's okay.
And it's on the field, I, I have the information, so Kate was just coming to be here, so if you want to, you can go.
Well, I don't want to, I don't want to waste your time if you're here to help to, to give us a presentation, so let's move to grammar.
Absolutely. So I don't know, did you guys get the packets? They're perfect. So yeah, I'll just kind of go through some of the numbers here quickly and I'll make sure you can have some time to ask some questions too, but we started in June of last year, just to remind, so we're not quite at a year yet, but getting pretty close all of a sudden, so uh, it's right away on the first page, it says two million eight hundred and fifty thousand as of right now. Uh, you can see we began the year at two million nine fifty-one. Market hasn't been very kind to us as far as how it's been doing so far. Um, but the couple of the numbers that I like to point out for a portfolio like this where it's all individual bonds and high quality, we really did this looking at the income, so so far year-to-date, this is through March thirty-first, the April report wasn't ready yet to do this, so you had already earned thirteen thousand six hundred and forty dollars. Uh, and that's just because of the extra interest why we did this. The market appreciation is negative a hundred and twenty-nine, and you might go, well, we're getting killed on this. The nice part is when you hold the bonds, they pay you the interest for the whole time and pay you back in full as you let those mature. So as long as you're not going to sell them, they're going to pay back the full par value of the bond at that maturity date. We have bonds maturing throughout, so it's ladder, so there's some coming due this year, next, and so on, out quite a few years. Uh, the nice part with the interest rates going up, which is why the market appreciation's going down, is because people are going, well, I don't want to pay you, I may still want to buy your bond, but I'm going to pay you less because I can go get a new one paying a higher interest rate, so to make you worthwhile, I'll give you less money for years currently. So that's where that's going, but as the bonds mature, we're buying new ones that are going to be paying a higher interest, so when we started it, we were looking at maybe one and a half percent, now we're probably up to two and a half. Um, so, not, not huge, huge, but it, it, extra one percent on close to three million adds up in a hurry. Um, and I pointed out that thirteen thousand, you know, I don't remember exactly what you're getting on the bank side, but I just ran, I think it was roughly point three percent maybe. For a whole year, that'd be about nine thousand in income, in the first three months, you're already at thirteen. So, I think that's, that's kind of the number to look at. On the next page, and this will get nicer as it has a longer timeframe. Uh, I like this one because it breaks it down year-to-year how it's been doing and shows how much income. So last year was twenty-two thousand, just that June to December. So obviously, again, a, a nice amount of income compared to what you get sitting in the bank account, which is why we're looking at this as the option. So, otherwise, it goes into on the next page, a lot of the details of, you know, just the return numbers. Again, this is taking into account the market appreciation, obviously doesn't look real good, but I still fully believe over time this will get better, because like I said, the bonds will pay you back the full par value at maturity. And for you guys, I, I don't think there's any plans to, to sell early, I mean, we certainly have that, it is liquid if you guys need the money for something. It's not like you can't sell, but we just have to show you what it would be at right now if we were to sell them. Uh, otherwise, the, the last couple pages are just all the individual bonds, I don't want to waste your time going through each one unless you guys have questions, but we have a, a wide variety of US treasuries, US agencies, taxable muni bonds from other cities, states, different things to help earn on the return. Uh, you can see the, the current yield on the par right column. You know, overall, the total is one point eight five right now is where that yield is. So it's already started to creep up a little bit even in just a year from bonds that have already matured and buying new ones. So I guess I would just, you know, open it up to questions, I don't know if anybody has thoughts. I guess the forgot there was one very, very, very last page, you don't tell you kind of the yield, the maturity is the two point three eight is kind of a good one to look at, because that takes into account what we paid for the bonds compared to what they're going to yield over the maturity. So, that two point three eight percent is kind of what we're expecting for our current yield currently, so yeah, other questions or thoughts, concerns, I know it's we started it and it's been a tough period to kind of get going on with the returns looking bad, but you know, those are kind of the take with a, a grain of salt a little bit, because you will get the, the whole value back. As I said, we are buying very high-quality bonds, so I don't expect any of them to fail, that's really when you lose on, on bonds, is if you give to a, a company or in your case, a government entity that fails and goes bankrupt and can't pay back. Uh, we, we monitor that very closely and make sure we're getting into high-quality places that, you know, don't have a a high risk of failure, uh, because that's, that's the biggest concern, is we want to make sure that you're not losing the principal. Um, you do take a little less interest to do that. We went to higher-risk bonds, we can do a higher interest rate, but it's probably not worth the risk to do it. So.
Blaine, this is your portfolio, right?
Yep. So the, the three million were good and all the middle cash out, is my understanding.
Right, and you'll, you'll, you'll pay back as the bonds mature, and they have, you know, all different maturities, but as they mature, they're going to pay back the whole par value of the bond.
When you're looking at the market appreciation, that's just the number there, because we're locked in.
That, that's, that's only if we sell, so even if it was up a hundred thousand, you really aren't going to get that unless we're selling it. Uh, you know, when it's up, there are times that we may go, hey, it might be worth selling this bond to take the game and moving it into something else, because it's better than what you would do if you helped it and just got the uh, interest payments. But basically that income number is the, the reason we're doing it. You know, and we started with the three billion, I think there's a couple CDs still at the bank that are coming due, I don't know if there's any interest, I know it's, it's tough when the market's down, it's easier to talk about putting more in, but certainly that interest number, and like I said, with new money, we're probably looking at closer to two and a half if we were to put it, put more in at this point. So, there, there's something to think about if you have other funds that are earning very low, uh, bank rates still have not done much.
You don't lose money unless you mature on early, correct?
If you're going to sell them.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Otherwise, it's a locked-in rate of that.
You're, you're getting that rate, like I said, the time you lose money is if we invested in something that failed completely. But.
It's, it's an actual, it's a, it's a non-actualized gain or loss, it's also
Yeah, and we just have to
Whatever the stuff.
These reports, we have to show you what it would be valued at if you were to sell it at any given time. That's just the regulations we have to be by there to do this for yet, and so the, the value for you guys is kind of meaningless, the up and down market appreciation, because the plan is not to sell them. We're doing it for that interest income.
We're safe now.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we're doing pretty safe, I mean, you can't get a whole lot, I mean, there was some like US government type stuff in there, there was, there was some other, you know, state entities.
We're buying like T-bonds and stuff.
Yeah, it's
If this, if this comes to bad term, the whole economy is going to be way worse, like
Everything's going to be bad. It's, yeah, and we're, we're in a lot of trouble if these start to fail. And a lot of that just comes down to your regulations. Uh, as a, a government entity, we have to follow the state statutes. And, and we have people that are keeping up on those and investing according to those state statutes, uh, which is something that I don't think a lot of places could do, as, as I think you guys found out when you we looked at it last year, and I know you put it out for bid, and I know some places said they just couldn't do it, because they don't keep up with it, because it is an extra little bit of work to make sure you're following those. So.
What kind of rate are we getting on CDs now, Lisa? It's out of curiosity.
Oh, it's, it's under one. And I don't really think, I know, I don't think we want to tie up any more money, because I don't know about roads and, I mean, we have to look at that, so I mean, we don't want to tie up anymore.
Yeah, and that was essentially Mike, Mike, I mean, it's good we're making, I mean, because we're talking yield is we're, we're looking at the liquidity of the money sitting in a bank account is at point three percent versus we're making two point three here, so as long as we don't have any problems tying that money up, it makes sense, you know, as long as they're safe. You know, as long as they're safe, then we're gonna get that additional two percent, it's a good thing.
Why I like the CD, I was making more than the money market, so I tied it into for a year.
Yeah.
And they're they're not on the same date, you know, they're.
Basically, what you're saying, we just gotta make sure we have operation.
We do, I don't wanna have to be tied in here and then we have to cash out something that we're.
Right, yeah, yeah.
And then I don't know, do you guys, um, I was only giving Blaine and Lucas this copy, do you guys wanna copy it? Cause I get a monthly report every, do you want that in your packet?
No.
No, I don't think we wanna see it monthly, but I wouldn't hurt to see maybe quarterly or.
Okay.
Like you said, you have quarterly.
Just a quarterly pack would probably be good just to see where we're at.
A little more, you have quarterly one, maybe.
I think that monthly one is every.
Just the statements?
Yes, I didn't know if they wanted it, if you want that, but it's not.
Yeah.
I I trust that Blaine's got his eyes on it, so, anything crazy is going on, he'll tell.
Yeah.
The the quarterly one is always the better one anyway, because then you get the ups and downs.
Yeah. I see a lot of that, it's it takes into account the bank stuff on, at least at Brown, um, it has that kinda information on there and it's not. The statement has all the transactions, buys and sells, which you could probably aren't curious to look into easily, but.
Yeah. They they are.
You know, and and for a cash flow, uh uh obviously, that's something you have to deal with and. Um, you know, we can certainly work with you on that too, if you wanna look at, well, you know, we're gonna need this in a year. You know, we could look at, hey, let's maybe buy a US treasury that's out of here that's making two percent, and it's gonna come due in a year, so. You know, I I'm not saying tie up, I mean, you need to make sure you're having your money already, but.
Oh, I think like that's okay, what's there, it's to put more in there, that's what happens probably.
Yep. Absolutely. Okay, so.
All the federal money, you're gonna want match money on roads, right?
Yeah.
You know, you're gonna have money to fix roads and.
Okay.
Yeah.
They actually have a little bottle of water there.
Oh, okay.
A hundred and eighty dollars.
Yeah, I think something like that.
Yeah, it's a balance between making sure we get some return on it versus keeping enough liquid so that we have the ability to.
Yeah, and and as you can see, you don't wanna try to sell, I mean, not that every year is gonna be down like it is this year, but.
Right.
Um, obviously, that's not ideal if you are having to sell some to take take a loss, um, so definitely something to think about.
You're definitely watching out for our best interest, right?
I have to, Brimmer's a fiduciary in our spot and we have to be in that role, so that's that's a hundred percent my job, but.
A lot of people don't understand a bond, even if you have a CD, you can pay it back.
Right, if you if you have to cash it out early, you can pay a penalty, you know, a few months' interest or whatever it might be depending on the CD, but.
This is just a wall.
Exactly. So.
Okay, any further questions or discussion? Okay, looks good, appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay, it's gonna come over here and walk in and go, what the hell? Everyone's gone. Okay, over here. Kevin.
Morning.
Morning.
First up, we talked quite a bit already about the road of days, but we'll go through it again, I think we've got nine roads that are actually closed right now. Um, probably another half dozen that are just partially fenced off, you can get around bad spot, that type of thing, so.
For the fenced off, we're checking those frequently, just.
Yeah, every morning, and sometimes in the afternoon, depending on the situation.
Still want to go back and some of the things they can drive around in.
Right.
We getting, just a word of caution, maybe, are we getting some pictures of these?
Yeah, we've taken pictures of all.
Okay, are we putting them, are we putting them on the state website?
State.
So they can see what's happening up here, and then we go down there to, we gotta fix these roads.
Something you could do if you get the picture up.
Yeah, if they ask, well, we have it, but we haven't been, um.
Chris, I have sent the uh complete washout on that one of the states, like, if you have more pictures, get some on my way, I'll take all of those and the most.
You'll get him sent down there.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I I think the state's pretty well aware, if we're not killing county, that's.
Oh, yeah.
Well, no, but I mean, a lot of the representation, it comes from the western part.
I agree. They need to know what's going on.
They're still basically in a drought after thirty, forty inches of snow.
Yeah.
I mean.
Just so that, I think the pictures are a good idea, just.
It's actually requirement for like a FEMA or a federal disaster.
Always so.
Right.
We do have the pictures, we have to send them today.
I I think if, Chris, if you have time, I think that drone imagery would work really, really nice on that. Sometimes when you have that many roads, like, hey.
Go find, we're planning on that sometime today if weather will operate.
In the drone, you get the drone up, start taking pictures of water out of farmland, and farmers are going down with June, deciding whether they wanna seed it again, or. You know, take PB and, uh, some of those pictures would be pretty beneficial for farmers and say, okay. Here's the way it looked in first part of May, uh, I mean, do you want me to get this seed or not, but I don't think there'll be any argument from the government either on that.
Never know though.
You never know. They could use a lot of words.
It's funny with a a a whole road picture, this one looks exactly like that one, unless there's something in the background.
We're sending out the same pictures, the same road.
Make sure you got.
Yeah, we got twelve roads out.
Make sure your location out of there.
Yep, make sure you're breaking the location though. No, cause they, Carroll, the WDA, I mean, Trail County after that last run, I think they said they had fifty some spots that washed out, I mean, total washouts. So I mean, they they were just trying to put stuff together, and that was before the last weekend rain, I believe it was, so they were just trying to get the main arteries open, try to get them built so the people could just get around the county.
Pretty ugly.
Yeah.
And ninety percent of these, there's nothing wrong with the culvert, it's like, they either find their frost line in there, I don't know how it's happening, the water finds them way through the above the culvert. I'm thinking it's the frost line, I don't know, it's here, so I don't know.
Sure, they're moving loose dirt.
Yeah.
That's where it's where it can find a washout spot, basically.
Once in a while, you'll slip and the dirt inch of dirt will move and it's wrapped up that frost line, it's kinda the same concept here, I think, I don't know, who knows? But I do know that most of those culverts are fine. Put out one or two, they're got a hole in them, but.
Plugged up or they're frozen, so, they just can't water them, you place, well, water's gonna find the athletes resistance, it always does.
So any more questions on roads? Uh, we're being pretty creative with road posts, actually, it's hard to find them, we're pulling them out of the ditches from years ago. And waitin' on it, so they found along yesterday morning, so they're in forests throughout the state town, in our county also. And then the next, uh, we got the remaining summer maintenance contracts, so the only two we got to make a motion on today is South and a Walk-in in Dry Lake, that'll be the last two we have.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to sign the uh summer maintaining con- summer maintenance contracts for South and a Walk-in in Dry Lake, further discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same side, motion carries.
Then K L J did give us the contract or they're called task orders for the engineering, the construction engineering on Roundy three up by hand, um. Follow you on that.
Yep, um, Craig, there's the scope is pretty pretty short, it's just a, the NSA, the task orders are basically, they just have the. Each work I own, um, spelled out in school, you know, if they're matched up in the spreadsheet, attached, um, each person who's listed, I got myself, Greg and Ryan. The most work hours and then, um, Rob, come in, he was in our office here, he was a little grant force now, so I could come over and help, help where needed, and then. Got Brandon Jones, known for Dallas City for the asphalt testing, we may have to sub that out depending on work load, but as the topic change. And once will be hourly, I guess if I brought some in, the task orders, if we can take those out or not, those out of the act. Um, survey, Chicago also needed a preliminary survey as well. And I'll help all the paperwork, payroll since early. So only about major businesses of people in and from other offices, or my bank account or something. If there are any questions, I don't know, and then I think it's well seven point eight percent of the construction, uh, not, which is reasonable. So that figures like the, you know, this is just a estimate of what the labor's gonna be, it's hundred twenty thousand, two hundred fifteen dollars. He has a maintenance hourly, so you know, if it's, we're, I'll come in and do that, so I hear, well, seven thousand, we're in the last one.
So I looked at all the, I think it was reasonable, so I I guess I would ask for a motion to cut that task order.
I would approve task order.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve the uh task order with K L J for the Roundy County three engineering of the Lipton Bay north of seventeen, further discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same side, motion carries.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And the last thing I have is I need to put a order together for culverts for inventory, it looks like we're gonna be using a lot, so I thought I'd get it. My order ahead of twenty five other states or counties, so that's a big order that's gonna cost approximately a hundred and six thousand dollars, and. My land budget for that is a hundred and twenty five thousand, but that's one of those in and out, and res- res- resale most of these culverts, so. I'd like the motion order, so.
Second.
Okay, motion in a second to approve the ordering, this isn't paying, correct, just ordering, okay, ordering a hundred and six thousand dollar worth of culverts for usage or resale, further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye, aye.
Both same side, motion carries.
Oh, I am, so there's something for me. Stream crossing standards that you're asking the Department of Water Resources on, did Matt get back to you on leashing of those he said?
That was my last email, man, two of them, yeah, it's not that.
Supposed to be like the end of last week.
Yeah.
I I'm sure they're a little busy statewide, but, you know, it's been since, what, August?
Which one are we waiting for?
Uh.
Which ones?
There's one way up in the corner by the home, and then there's one on Highway one. So, uh, it's north of Edmore and then west of one about half mile or so.
Okay, so these are on our county, they're on your county roads, just culvert replacement?
No, both of those township roads, but they're bridges that.
Oh, okay.
Uh, we needed a stream crossing standard, so we know what side of culverts.
Okay, so this is for the next year or this year?
This year.
This year.
Then we have one other one, that bridge, uh, see, from Edmore, Edmore Cemetery. Uh, about mile and a half west, there's a bridge there where there's a little pink bend in the road, we did one there too, just to be prepared. I don't know if we're gonna put that in the office here or not. It's got some issues with the bridge, it's still safe to cross, but the uh guardrails are bad and something else too, I can't remember, but we did one on there too.
Okay, but culverts in there.
That would be.
They get hard to get these, awesome.
Oh, my goodness, yeah, I could read it.
I mean, it hasn't gotten any better, I mean.
It seems like we've been, it seems like we've been talking about these for multiple years, though, they just can't just stay on top of things.
Yeah.
Yeah. Probably.
The sad sad part about that is if you ask K L J or any engineering firm the new one, probably they'd have it done in a month, you know, two weeks maybe. You know, if you really got speedy, you can get it done in two weeks or so, it takes a year to get one, and I get it, they're doing the whole state, but they've got. Five, six, seven people working, I don't know how many people, multiple people working.
Is that a, that's a service provided, is that like century code mandated, or it's just kinda always been a courtesy service?
Hmm.
The century code mandates it, but if we do it through the state, it's free.
Yeah.
Or if we hire necessarily.
I'm saying they don't have to necessarily provide it for you, though, it's just they always have.
Well, that's part of their job.
So it's part of the job.
Part of their job.
Maybe they should, you know, hire a few.
But it's one of those things, if we get one, we have to follow it.
Yeah, absolutely, no.
They just don't have enough staff or what?
Right, I don't know, I assume that's the situation, I don't know.
Is it in the capital building?
No, it's just water.
Just sell them for the, you know, it's state water.
We don't knock, go down and knock on their door?
Yeah, I don't know.
Help us out here?
I wish, you know, try to do that.
I I know some places in the state that have waited three, four years on some stuff, they, you know, it, hey, it's, um. I I don't know if it's time consuming or if it's just lack of staff, or if they require additional information as we're moving forward through it, but it's.
Is it a question to ask that that water?
It it's been a, it's been a frustration, um, and, uh, you know, Ke- Kevin's always done a really good job of getting things in early, but it's still, you know.
Yep.
Well, I can understand, you know, you can't expect it overnight, but I mean, if you get one last year under the assumption that we're going to do something next year, I don't think it's not a reasonable thing to say, you know. In six months, you should have some idea of what you're looking at, so.
And when I asked them, I explained that to them, we'd like to have this, I have the vehicles, so we can get an order, time to do the work, and then, well, budget to funding, yeah.
Yeah.
Are we lighting them up donuts or what?
Send him some coffee money, yeah.
Dick Johnson was on the board, and I think we got him to get his involved in the emails and, and else.
Well, let's hope they get it up, I guess that's all we can do at this point.
No.
If they don't get it done, then we'll have to change plans.
I would, I would certainly expect them within the, within a week or.
No, honestly, I took it over last week, but it didn't fill up.
Okay, any further questions for Kevin?
Thank you.
Seeing none, thanks, Kevin.
Appreciate it. Sure.
Morning.
Morning.
These items are all non-budgetary items, that's why we're here today, um, culverts, I don't have one of the codes back on the phases, we'll discuss that when I get to the. The SWAT team, you should have the proposal uh from you, this is something that Chief Kim and I at the time, and it's never been on our budget, we've just been kind of funding it. Um, using secondhand equipment for many, many, many years, and we finally decided we should probably get them some decent equipment. So this quote includes new body armor with the, um. The shock plates they call, uh, the ones down on our ceramic, evidently, it's a liability if they have them, no way to go to steel, like, that's a lot of them. There's a few, a couple weapons and things on there, and then our portion is nine thousand and what, sixty six dollars? Um, that's one fourth of the bill because we're sharing it with Benson County, the City Devil Plate, and the SWAT team itself, uh, to fund this equipment. Well, that's our our one fourth of it, and it's uh something that I think we really need to uh look at updating. Uh, the body armor they're currently using is secondhand from Atlanta, uh, they had a, they upgraded in Atlanta. So I would say we've been getting by with, uh, but as things are going, you know, we kinda need to, uh, I think we need to upgrade it, this is a good time for our chance to do it, I think, so that's. Or we have to, I don't know, you wanna do separately or you wanna do all together?
I don't know.
Separate, well, that's kind of that one, if you have any questions, that's the reason we're doing it, uh, we're updating and upgrading.
Had a group of people involved if you're swapping them.
Well, you need that, because a lot of them are, they're a law enforcement, so some are working, some aren't, or where you do have a situation, you can't call everybody on the list, because. You know, we have to have a, you know, we have a pretty good group of people that are attending trainings quite regularly, so, and it's, I think, something that's. As you can tell in the news, things aren't getting better, so knock on wood, I don't know what you're finding here, we haven't had a a major incident with them yet, so. But it's always nice to have it as a as a resource.
Does nine thousand dollars, Steve, if you're asking for, everybody else, everybody else is on board?
Yes. Yes, nine thousand, and everybody else. The the city has already approved theirs, Benson County's going this morning, um.
SWAT team has the money. The SWAT team has the money.
And the SWAT team has the money. And we thought that was important because they have that fundraiser golf thing. We thought that was important to keep them in the loop of F P, of uh, liable share, their portion. And not just give, you know, give, I mean, let's give them all the money when they have their own fundraising source. But they don't have enough to cover this whole. Uh.
Right.
Entity, so I thought, we thought that was fair when we had the discussion.
We take that out of the first ARPA money?
Well, that's kind of what I'm thinking is where it should, because these are, anything I can't with a budget for, we never really have.
Move to approve.
Okay, we have a motion and a second uh to. The nine thousand sixty six dollars and fifty cents is our cost share for the SWAT team uh supplies on call. Further discussion.
Steve, do you have a, any type of idea of how often the SWAT team's been called out at all or?
Um, you know, we, we kind of. Are using them as a, right now with more of a training.
True.
Uh, so for example, if the red passport says that they rest warrant on the house that we have questionable individuals in, we might call the SWAT team in to make entry.
Yeah.
So number one, we have safety, number two, they get some training.
Right.
Uh, so actual callouts, it's only been probably five or six in the last year. Uh, what we've utilized though.
Good, good.
For training purposes for other things.
Yeah. Well, that's.
I hope I never have to call them all, to be honest with you.
Yeah, that'd be preferable.
Like your tire truck, gotta have them, but.
We want to ask them, we don't want to do, so.
These new taser, how long will they expire?
Let's uh, let's talk about that when we get to that, like that's a full different. Okay, I can, you want to, we feel now.
Good question, we need to be ahead.
I'm, I was already ahead, I already had that plan.
Well, we'll vote on this first and then we'll. Okay, further discussion. Seeing none, are we paying for it or are we just ordering it?
I'll turn you, well, I, I just soon have to pay for it because it's already gonna be ordered.
Okay. Well, when the bill, we don't, we don't have to vote, it'll just be part of the normal bills.
We don't have to write it today, but once it comes in, I guess.
Okay, further discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion carries.
Okay, the last one is the, is our, is our track vehicle, which is actually the Sheriff's Department's. It's not under search and rescue, but I allow, search and rescue is the ones that utilize it the most. Uh, the bogie wheels, the ones between the drive wheels, uh, are disintegrated. There's chunks, I mean chunks, I'm talking baseball sized chunks coming out of them, they're a solid rubber tire, they're not inflatable. Uh, and it's a nineteen eighty, eighty five or eighty six. Uh, vehicle, uh, anyway, so the second request is, we did find a place or a way to repair that, so it's usable. We have not had a whole lot of maintenance out of that thing. But anyway, so the bid, I think we have that one too, it's for uh, two thousand three hundred. Eighteen dollars and sixty three cents. That's to repair those bogie wheels or either wheels. So when we do need it, it's available as well. I'd hate to see us throw a trash when we're up the middle somewhere. And again, one, that's another one of those, you know. We got it for free from the Army, we've had it for many years, we've never had to do much to it, this is kind of a. Cost to do a business kind of thing.
Twenty three hundred bucks getting fixed. How long have we had this?
Oh. Ten, twelve years? Longer than that, because Nick and I went to Grand Forks and picked it up on the trailer back in many, many years, it was at the fire department for many years. We've had it for a long time.
We've never had to fix those wheels on?
Never, the only thing we've ever fixed on a thing was the water pump went out one time. And uh, we had to fix that, and that was like four hundred bucks. So that's nothing, I've just been kind of doing it in my budget. Because it's a bit minimal, but.
Nothing, doesn't last, I tell you. So, it's only forty years old, we gotta put tires on it.
We've used it, we've used it twice where it's actually been needed, that's, it's, we're kind of short on it, so.
I'm going to. Proven.
I think it's worth making for maintaining.
Yes. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second for uh repairing of the track vehicle for twenty two sixty three thirty two.
Okay, and these, these funds are also coming out of that original ARPA, that first responder? That, that'll get candy.
Okay. Would you venture a guess on a new machine like this?
Oh, boy.
You know, the, the brand of this one, the brand of this one's a Delorean, that gives you any, that gives you really hot, the working board corporation does.
And it, it runs when you need it, definitely.
It's got four and six, so it's very, you know.
Wow.
Anyway.
Very good.
Um, watch guard.
Oh, okay.
So is that a note to like shock charges and sales stuff?
Whatever the, whatever the, that's the right note. A lot of times.
It says twenty two thirty two written over on the side.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Do we just wanna make the motion without a dollar figure?
It's either gonna be the twenty two thirty two or the twenty three nineteen, so we're only, you know, it's a hundred dollar.
Okay, well, let's just make the motion without including a dollar figure, just to clear the tires off the estimate. Okay, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion carries. Okay. Watch guard and tasers.
Uh, let's just do the watch guard, uh. Last time we discussed this, when we ordered a lot of candles. And we have this, we have a unit that they have sent us, that we have just sitting in the office, that's just the. The brain, I don't know what the name of the action, but it's just the brains of the thing, it's got cameras and the monitor stuff, but it's the majority of the unit, and. I want to put it into service as a full unit, so we have a spare, uh, so. I didn't get, I apologized for that es- I didn't get that estimate until about four thirty yesterday, so you won't have it in front of you, but. Um, the code I got for watch guard was one thousand nine hundred ninety one dollars. To make that a viable unit. Uh, just for reference, to purchase a whole brand new, ready to go unit is about six grand. So this is quite, you know, a lot more cost effective if we can use this if it's in our, our another vehicle.
You can get it fixed.
Yeah.
Okay, further discussion. We have a motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second uh to. Get the watch guard set up so we can put it in the vehicle, further discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same time, motion carries.
All right, tasers. I'm gonna start with this, anyway, um, I'm not gonna ask for any money, but I'd like to discuss it with you, but what, you know. Since they, in the last few months, uh. They quit making the. Items that we need for the tasers that we currently have. And it's another one of those, we're not gonna maintain them kind of thing for a while, and they're gonna be short of them, because we've had our tasers for all these. All that was back when Chief Kim was here, who's old? Fifteen years, so over half of them are fifteen years old. Uh, and once again, we don't use them very often, but uh. The new watch guard, or the new taser, which is. Axon is what it's called, they won't, they won't sell you a taser anymore. This is like what I found out, so you have to rent them from them, so it's now become a yearly. Fee. Which is very frustrating, I can't, I just can't buy one. So what I think I'm gonna have to do with this is put it into my budget for next year. And try to work through it that way instead of going and just get it. Before we could just go buy a taser and it was yours, and then we just bought the accessories and the equipment, you know, we bought cartridges, we bought batteries, we put it all. And just go and go as we need it, but now they're saying they're, they won't, they're gonna support that much anymore, it's longer. And then in the research, I found out that I can't just go buy one, I just can't buy. Tasers or new ones to replace the ones we have. So now we have to do this rental fee and they'll send us new ones every, whenever, back and forth, but it's gonna cost us a yearly fee. Which we have never done before.
How many we got?
Ten.
And you, they're fifteen years old?
Not all of them, over half of them are.
They work?
Uh, yes, for now, but that's, that's the whole problem is because. The cartridges are getting old and they're not sure if they'll work anymore, because they've been sitting in the, somewhere for ten years.
Yeah, they're not making the cartridges anymore.
Well, they're, they still are for now, and then we got some time, but, you know, you just can't buy new cartridges and.
But we gotta have a plan in hand.
But we have to, I have to have a plan in hand, and I didn't find this out before yesterday, so. I think I'm just gonna have to scratch this off on today's uh.
What kind of, what kind of uh price are they looking to rent?
I haven't even got that number yet, I'm still waiting.
I don't know, right?
I probably don't want to know.
Yeah.
I know the city just did the same thing and they went to that rental thing and it's, I think it was a three year end of year.
For all the tasers they have?
But, but they only have, they don't have everywhere, you should each year there. So for example, the guys that are at home, they're not working, don't have their, you know, so when they come to work, they switch tasers with. So they only have six, I think.
Yeah.
Or six.
That's all about, right?
Uh, where we, you know, our guys are, anyway, so. Does that answer your question, Mr. Volk, tasers?
Yeah. I just. Everything seems like it's going on a payment system.
It is, and it is, I mean, we, we bought those tasers initially, we had that almost zero. Update and maintenance on them, except for buying cartridges every, every year when we do our training of them. Uh, which is minimal, it's about twenty five dollars a cartridge, so, you know, about two hundred and fifty, three hundred dollars a year that we've been kind of maintaining the. To do our training and our recertifications, and now we're gonna have to do this yearly, yeah, it's very frustrating, so.
Yeah, because they can just bring their.
Yeah. They change their hours and everything, so.
Yeah. And I know a business model, that you wanna buy something, they don't even sell it to you, but. So there's, there's no other brands, there's only.
After markets?
After the market.
Well, that's, that's kind of my question, because if, if they don't, if they're never gonna sell them, so how long, I guess it all depends on the contractual language, how long it. Are they gonna constantly be replacing? Like every other, you're gonna get some new ones, or you hold on to them for a certain amount of time, or? Because at some point, they're gonna have old tasers stacked up, if they just constantly replace them, and then they're gonna have to sell old tasers with them, unless they make so much money.
Make a new one, so he's making it in the.
Yeah, they don't even so much, or you know.
No, no. No, the batteries are a single unit, and we may have been able to maintain the same batteries. Over five years, because we don't, we aren't using it on a regular, you know. So when you turn it on, there's a little screen on the back that tells the number, and that's the percentage of battery you have left, and most of ours are still in the sixty to seventy percent. And about the only time we change a battery, it gets down to maybe fifteen, and then we'll start to change the bay, oh, just because of that's getting close.
So that's the cartridge then, you were talking?
The actual cartridge is the part that was on the front that.
Oh, yeah.
And there's gas to propel it, and that's what they're planning is starting to degrade, is the gas.
So that's what I'm asking, if you, if you were just charging, that's what you'd have to replace is that.
Yes, every time we have, yeah, that's the part, the cartridge, the front part, and that's about thirty, thirty to thirty five dollars.
So with this rental, we don't, I know you're.
But according to them, the rental comes with all the cartridges we need, so, it has no charge, so, but, they always have some, yeah, it's still frustrating. We'd still be better off being able to buy them, evidently that's not an option, so.
Well, you should probably. Put it in your budget because.
Yeah. I'm probably, I guess, I don't have the numbers anyway, they haven't gotten it to me. So I, I, I can't even proceed today, so, but, I'll just, I think it's gonna be something we're gonna have to do with the yearly budget for this one.
Yeah, because we're gonna be sitting here next year doing the same thing.
And we can't do that, so, I'll just have to incorporate that into my budget here and go from there.
Okay. If what you have is not working very well, we'll have to do that.
Well, we don't use them that often, so it's hard to.
We'd have to start.
We've been lucky enough to only have to come fire and went training. I think in the fifteen year gap, we've shot, we've only utilized them. Three times.
Good. One of those deals where you don't wanna use it, but it's.
It's available.
Any, any volunteers?
Yeah.
We were glad we had a volunteer, that was moving.
No?
Cord, or days? Yeah. I'll have to cower up. Okay, anything else?
No, sir.
Any questions for the sheriff? All right, thank, thank you, appreciate it. Okay, on to new business, if I'm reading this correctly, approval of lodging for the auditor treasurer conference, it's above the state rate by. A few dollars, they don't honor the state rate, or they're going.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second to approve the increased lodging fee for the auditor treasurer conference, further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries. District Health Board appointment. Who wants it? Who's willing to volunteer? Blaine, you interested?
Yeah.
All right. Well, I think, Mr. McKay had come down and asked me if I'd be interested in, you know, looking at the time constraints. Um, it's not that overwhelming, it's in the evenings, it's quarterly, it's something that I could do as well. So. But. Mr. Blaine, Mr. Volk, once.
Either way. You two decide, I'll, you should set up an arm wrestling match or. I'll do. Corpet?
Yeah.
Is there any other, we gotta take care of the day, or is that the only one? Well, for now, I think that'll leave it. No?
You find out that yet?
Yeah.
You want supper, you don't have something? Oh, we'll take the motion. There you go, it's at the john a lot, which is bad. Okay, do we have a?
Motion.
Motion to approve Blaine?
Yeah.
Okay. We have a second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to appoint Commissioner Volk. To the District Health Board. Further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion carries, okay, very good. Uh, approval of the V A credit abatement.
So, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion carries. Uh, notice of annual meeting for the North Dakota Insurance Reserve Fund. Uh, we have the option to appoint somebody to, we are delegate, correct? The two individuals are running unopposed as well, correct? So we don't necessarily have, we just, if somebody wants to go to the meeting, we can have a delegate there. When is the meeting again?
May, May two.
Okay, Andy, you wanna go?
Um, no, thank you. Probably a little busy.
Well, yeah, I think most of us are gonna be a little bit in the eighteen days, not busy.
Yeah, that's. You have a little busy with the election.
Okay, I guess it's just for informational purposes, I mean, if we don't wanna set down, we don't have to, it's.
Hey.
Just, they sent us the minutes and everything and everything like that, so.
We want to uh. Vote for a county representative. A county representative on the under board will be Chad Peterson, it looks like. Chad's currently the cast county. Uh, Board of Commissioners has been since twenty twelve.
Can we send in our votes proxy?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, do we just get to vote on the county side of things? Or on both?
That's the only option.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, the other one is six, so.
Yeah, so we just get to vote under the county portion, okay? Well, maybe, I would make a motion then if we want to send in the votes proxy.
I'd make a motion to send our vote in, vote by proxy for Mr. Chad Peterson.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries. Site authorization. Charitable gaming, correct?
Approved, second.
Motion and a second to approve the charitable gaming site authorization, further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed same side, motion carries. Approved letter of resignation.
I have a, one on this, so this is a formality. What it was supposed to be, it can be, this is a county auditor, but essentially you are acknowledging that you received it.
Okay.
Basically, you can't deny it as a resignation.
Well, no, yeah, it's a pleasure of being there, so, that can resign. Okay, do we have a motion to accept the resignation letter? Okay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the resignation letter. Further discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same time. Motion carries. Okay, now we're going to have to go through the uh appoint new chairman first, and then we'll go from there.
I'm moving.
Adam as chairman?
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Okay.
We have a second, further discussion. Yes, we're not nominating, do we have to nominate, or are we just appointing?
Uh, it says.
There's a point.
Yeah, we can see whatever, so. We'll have a new chairman.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second to appoint myself as the new chairman, further discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries, okay, well, then if that's the case, then, since I'm moving out of the vice chairmanship, I can't hold both at the same time, we'll have to. Appoint a new vice chairman. We have a not, or a.
I'll nominate Blaine.
Okay. We have a nomination, a motion for Blaine to be vice chairman, do we have a second on that?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries, Commissioner Volk is the new vice chairman. Uh, I'm just gonna make note of that, not forget. I have a nomination. Okay, appointee to fill the vacancy on the commission, at this point, I'll turn it over to the state's attorney to give us our. Options and how we have to go about doing this correctly.
Okay, so this is a little confusing, but. If a vacancy occurs within ninety-five days. Of an election. It's gonna be a general election, so you all get to decide and meet, you can agree on somebody. That person gets appointed to fill out until November. And the election happens, and December first, and commission takes place. If you cannot agree, the way the quote reads, is because we have an elected county treasurer. The treasurer will fill until that election, November. That makes sense?
And the treasurer can fill it no matter how far you're out from the election?
Until the next general election.
My question would be on the expediency of appointing someone. Do we, do we have to do it at this meeting, or if we wanna have the option to try to appoint somebody that's not the treasurer, do we have a meeting to make a determination?
It's not entirely clear, it says.
That's exactly what I wrote here.
I'll read it to you.
I appreciate the candid.
When a vacancy occurs in the board of county commissioners, the remaining members of the board immediately shall appoint some suitable person. Fill the vacancy from the district in which the vacancy occurred.
Yeah, so it just depends on what your definition of immediately is.
Right, so someone say. Day of, someone say next meeting, someone say. Gotta gauge the who's interested, so. It's a good idea to get the ball rolling, maybe have a discussion today.
Yeah, and that's, I've, yeah, we have to have a discussion on how we wanna move forward, that's not a question, it's just a matter of, I just was wondering if. You know, cause if it's, like you said, it depends on what your definition of immediately is. Okay, I guess what are the feelings of the other commissioners?
One good thing is we are having a general election coming up.
Yes.
You know.
It brought to my attention that a special election, how expensive that is. You know, costly to come.
But we wouldn't have to have a special election.
No, how many days out are we getting November election?
More than ninety-five, and that's why it goes to November instead of June.
Yeah, so we're probably what, six, less than six months out, something like that, a hundred and eighty days maybe at the most.
Right.
Somewhere there, the the question was asked of me, um, so. Then I guess it doesn't matter, it's not germane necessarily, this specifically, but when the special election occurs, then it'll be under the same rules as the. County commission election that's occurring currently, it'll, but it'll be, you have to get signatures. Certain amount of signatures within that timeframe, sixty-four days previous to the election, or whatever it is, and it'll be handled the same way. It's kind of what I figured, and I told that individual, but I said I would have to be.
Basically, if this goes to the election, people will still have time to put their name in that.
Right.
Correct.
Yes, yeah, cause I think that's what the concern was, they're like, well, the, we already passed the date, and I said, no, basically, it sets a new date of. I would be probably around the first of week of September or something, is when the. You know, people would have to have their name in to try to run, like.
So, I mean, the candidates that are already applied, would they be able to qualify for this also, or are they qualified for the other one?
So it depends, which is the lawyer answer, but if they. Wanna go for Lucas's seat, it's an unexpired term, so it's a two-year term. They would have to withdraw from the other seat, and you can't hold two seats on the county commission at the same time. So, and it actually opens up all sorts of interesting possibilities, because. If all three were to withdraw, put their name in the app, then nobody'd be on the ballot for the other seat, so it's, uh. It's kind of a weird donut hole, it doesn't happen that often.
It's not like you could take them out of the poll and have them out.
Well, and hypothetically, they're already, they're already on the ballot for June, so they could announce that they're not running for that seat anymore, but more than likely, I would assume. Everyone that's running for that seat is gonna stay running for that seat, will have probably different people that are interested in running for this in general. I would think, but you don't know that for certain, obviously. That's up to the people that are running for the current two seats. To make that determination, how they wanna handle it.
If. In theory, you were to appoint somebody that was running, they would have to withdraw from the other one. That makes sense?
Yeah.
If if you could agree on somebody that's a current candidate, that makes sense.
Yep, I'm tracking. And. So when that. On September that they had filled that out and submitted, um. And whoever the successful candidate is in that election, is it just a two-year term then?
It's whatever the unexpired balance is, so two years.
That's so they'd be running again in twenty.
That way it puts it back into the same.
Yeah, so the cycle stays the same, so you're always going through it.
That's the purpose. Correct.
Otherwise hypothetically, you could have designations, and all of a sudden, you're voting for five county commissioners.
Other, yeah, that's.
Yeah.
We'll go back to a special election, we could set a date, let's say, fifth of September. And have this particular item on ballot. That's why I'm saying, that's a very expensive.
Well, hypothetically, yeah, you could have an election ninety-five days from today, if you wanted to, I mean, but.
Right.
Yeah, I I don't for, I don't, I don't see how that's even an option, because.
No, I'm not. No.
The cost of running a full county election would. It'd be one thing if we were, like you said, if we were two years out from an election date, and we didn't feel comfortable appointing someone, and we felt that a special was necessary. But when we're only. Three months past, what a special election would be at the best? To me, we just made a decision, do we wanna appoint somebody from the general populace, or do we want the treasurer to take that seat? Under the premise that we, you know, and. You know, that we don't wanna have to essentially pick somebody to sit in that seat otherwise.
I came in and talked to Lisa yesterday about it, and she has no problem sitting here for. I. Would recommend we do that, I think it's the simplest, the cleanest. I mean, she's familiar with how it works.
I do have a clarification, conflict of interest.
Yeah.
No, um. So. Whoever is appointed, they're, they're a full voting commissioner.
Correct.
They're not limited or like ties. It doesn't say exactly why it's written this way, that it's the county treasurer, but I think the intent is. This person has already been elected by the community once, so. You know. They've qualified as far as the election side, the house goes. But they're not limited, just to tie breaking, or things like that.
They're full, they have full power on the commission list, any of us that are seating currently do.
That being said, in the best interest. Financial matters or things that affect her department should probably.
Well, and and in thinking about this over the weekend, my main, I shouldn't say concern, but consideration is, is that if we pick somebody from the general populace. We're what, six weeks away basically from starting the budget? So you have to have a pretty good working knowledge of how the budget take, you know, how our budget process works, and you're gonna be kind of jumping in midstream. So I don't know if that's necessarily from the county's perspective, the best option. My mind went initially to, do we have any previous county commissioners that would be willing to just sit those six months? You know, uh, you know, maybe if somebody would be willing to do that, if we had somebody that, you know, had previously been elected by the community and was. Willing to sit on those six months, but I haven't talked to any of them, so I have no clue, but that was just my initial thought process. I would have no problem also with with Lisa sitting on for six months, if if she's willing to do so, just because she obviously knows the ins and outs of the county and the budgeting, and. It would be fairly seamless, and if she's willing to do so, I think that's an efficient option as well.
Do we have to make the decision today?
Depends how you define immediately.
Well, and and that's kind of, that's.
I don't think it'd be, it'd be three months.
Well, and that was where my line of questioning was, because if if. Say we don't seat somebody today, but we decide on a process, I think that at least says immediately, at least you decided on a process. But if you decide to punt it, punt it, punt it, then if you then decide we're gonna point some money, then all of a sudden, you could have some people saying, well, that wasn't immediately, you did follow century code. So, you know, I I think it's kind of a quagmire in terms of, we either have to make a decision today about our process. If we're going to go outside to the public, or we're gonna seat the treasurer. At least in my, that's just my opinion, that's my read of the situation, so to speak. And if we have a process in place on how we wanna do it.
Right.
Good, cause I think that at least that demonstrates the immediacy that we have an idea of how we want to do it.
I did speak with a former commissioner, uh, Mr. Berg, uh, retired from the commission, uh, and. You know, when he became a state water commissioner representative, and. I, you know, so he understands, um, county government, he would be willing to do it. I think there's some other retired county commissioners that would be willing to do it for their, the six-month period, um, if that's the process we wanted to go, um.
Hold on, gotta clarify here, if you appoint somebody, they're on for two years, Lisa is six months.
So then it's not to the general, that's for the whole term then?
What?
Okay, okay.
Really? Wow, that's easy decision there.
Oh, yeah, and then at that point, we're probably not gonna find somebody that's just willing to fill two and a half years of term. That's a, that's a pretty good commitment, unless it's somebody that wants to run again. And then at that point, I I I get back to the problem of, I don't, I don't feel comfortable picking somebody, basically putting them and giving them the power of the county, see basically two and a half years from now. Because then we're basically picking a winner against, you know, cause then they're walking in with the beating and a compliment for next election.
November's gonna be here before we know it.
Yeah, like I said, if it was a week after the last election, then I would say, you either pick somebody, or you have a special.
Let's just go with, uh. But that's the, your interpretation of, so if we appoint somebody.
They're made, they're.
Certain remainder of the term.
Correct, see, I was under the assumption that if we appointed somebody, it was just on the next general.
That's it, I can't agree on somebody.
Okay, okay.
I may have misspoke.
Oh, that's okay.
Maybe I was catty, just for clarification, put this on the. As a special election for November, alongside our general election. What's the extra cost, pretty minimal, or more, more than minimal?
To do a separate, separate ballot just for that, it's. That's crazy.
It is?
Do we have to have a separate ballot, it's gonna be printed on the same ballot?
No, oh, it's gonna be on the same ballot.
Yeah, so it's not gonna cost us anything, essentially, we do it November.
Okay, that's what I was getting.
But if we had a special, it's gonna cost us.
Like if you did a special.
No, I didn't mean that, no, I'm gonna.
And then.
Alongside or.
Yeah, and basically, it's just gonna read in there.
It's just gonna be.
These candidates for this, yeah, candidates, yeah, it'll say two-year unexpired term.
Well, it's not a big deal.
Not for the November, but if we did it in a special type situation, then it would cost. A very decent amount of money, you don't even wanna fathom the guess, cause it would be cheap.
Looks to me, we have one, just go with Lisa and. Do it that way.
Okay.
I would say it would be fair to the vote of the people.
Absolutely, you're a hundred percent right. I'll make that move.
Okay, we have a motion then to essentially. Appoint, well, not appoint anyone else and allow the treasurer to. Are we appointing the treasurer, or are we basically pumping and saying we're allowing the treasurer to take that position?
If you can't agree on somebody. Then the treasurer gets appointed until November.
I know, but that's, that's my question, by making a motion, if you're appointing her, then she's taking, technically taking the two and a half year unexpired term, we have to basically make the motion that we can't agree on anyone else, correct?
That's the way I understand it, and basically.
Because otherwise, if we appoint her, then she has to resign to take her seat, yes.
Right.
Okay. The wheels are turning in here, not a lawyer, but the wheels are turning.
What I've gathered, we all are. In the same terms, we don't wanna appoint because you have to fulfill the two and a half years, so with that, we're basically not coming to. Conclusion of doing it, so that would put Lisa into that role, correct?
Yes.
We don't make no motion on that then?
There wouldn't be, right, there wouldn't be.
I know, but I I think he's, I think you probably have to make a motion that we don't. We don't agree, because otherwise, then who has the power to then seat that, to seat the treasurer, century code does, but it doesn't state within timeframe other than immediately.
If you were under. Assuming that it was six months also.
And that, that's what I assumed.
Yeah, I was under that assumption as well, I.
Right, but but initially, I was under the assumption that you appoint somebody and they fulfill that, that term till the end of that term, kinda thing, but. In hearing, it got convoluted and messy, and, and. All the six months came about, I'm not sure, but, but that was. Now, I think it'd be reasonable to find a former commissioner that would do a six-month deal, but I don't know if they, you know, they left for a reason.
Yeah.
They, you know.
Yeah, they probably wanted it to be done, it'd be done, yeah, two and a half years is a commitment, six months is one thing.
And two and a half years is a commitment.
Well, yeah, we we basically have two options, we either make the decision today that we're going to try to appoint somebody else from the public and solicit essentially resumes or interest. Or we decide we can't, we don't wanna go that route, and we can't agree, and.
I think to be fair to the community, we just don't agree, at least to sit in there, but people hold. That's what I heard.
That's what I was hoping.
This is a weird discussion, because we're, we're essentially agreeing not to agree.
Yeah.
I don't agree with you.
Because of, because of the timeframe.
You made the motion.
Well, we had a motion, and we didn't have a second, technically, so it died for lack of a second.
I'll, I'll make a motion that we can't agree, appoint someone.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second for the minutes to say we are not in agreeance on how we should fill the term, and that the treasurer then, under century code, would take the seat. Correct, works for you? Probably immediately?
Yeah, right.
Well, he's reading.
It's forty-four oh-two oh-five vacancy in the board of commissioners.
Okay, yeah, maybe we should, maybe part of the motion should be that we, we essentially are going to follow century code guidance in forty-four oh-two oh-five, that we cannot agree. Okay. Further discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries, okay. The next question I would have, just out of, so then do we have to have a swearing in then, at our next meeting then?
All right, so. Any appointment to fill the vacancy must be made in writing, except as otherwise expressly provided in law, so. And then the next section says, a person appointed to the office shall qualify in time and manner, so. Lisa would be seated at the next, that's the way I read that.
Okay. So we have to write it down, have her do the oath, like always, sign, sign, and then swear her in, basically to sit on the commission for the six months. Okay, well, then the auditor, Andy, you'll need to make it sure we. All the guys, and she can work too, make sure we got everything right, sure it'll be good. Okay, the other question I would have then, and we don't necessarily have it on the agenda, but just a, um, it's, it's not necessarily for this meeting, but guidance in terms of. We'll need a list of all of the outside boards. Uh, and then determine when we're gonna have to make appointments for those outside boards, so that we can make sure, hopefully, we don't miss any meetings in the next two weeks, but if one gets missed, it gets missed again. Um, and if, if there is a meeting that's going to be missed, if you compile it, just give me a holler, and I can at least go sit. Just so we have a representative there, not to vote, obviously, you're at the small club, representative, we're gonna pull back some weeks. Okay. Anything else for that then? I think we got that handled. Okay, next up on the new business, A and S week. We have a short, but sweet proclamation in front of us, I guess Jeff can describe the upset behind it.
So the, few years back, the Aquatic Invasive Species Committee come up with the, the idea for. An aquatic nuisance awareness week to bring more attention to the problem that aquatic nuisance would create within our state. Um, last couple of years, Governor Burgum has signed a proclamation declaring a, an aquatic nuisance, uh, species awareness week. Uh, just a little extra education, um, promoting, uh, people take the steps necessary to. Reduce the risk of spreading aquatic nuisance within our state, um, following the, the A and S, uh. Guidelines through the game and fish, as well as the Aquatic Invasive Species Committee. Um, we have a, we actually have a statewide plan that the governor has approved, uh, for preventing aquatic invasive species. So, and with that in mind, uh, the proclamation, uh, that the governor has designated is for May fifteenth through the twenty-first, twenty-twenty-two. And a little short statement is Ramsey County Commission recognizes the importance of protecting our state and county. Res, water resources from aquatic nuisance species, and hereby fully support the efforts of North Dakota. Game and Fish Department's prevention measures, and fully support Governor Doug Burgum's proclamation. Designating the week of May fifteenth through the twenty-first, twenty-twenty-two as Aquatic Nuisance Species Awareness Week in the state of North Dakota. Signed by the chairman of the Ramsey County Commission.
Okay, do we have a motion to accept the proclamation?
So.
A motion in a second, why does it's a resolution supporting the proclamation? Okay, we have a motion in a second, uh, to, uh, su- support and sign the resolution supporting the. Aquatic Nuisance Species Awareness Week, further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries. Last on new business, outlets advisory committee meeting.
So the Devils Lake Outlets, uh, management advisory committee, annual meeting, to discuss the operations of the state outlets. It's a seventeen-person board or committee, um, and made up of. Public officials, uh, citizens within the upper Devils Lake Basin, and as well as the lower, uh. The upper Cheyenne, lower Cheyenne, and the Red River, as well as representatives from Minnesota and Manitoba. Um, previously, those meetings have all been in Carrington, or the past couple of years, they have been held virtually. This, uh, this year's meeting will be held right here in Devils Lake, at the Ligon State College, at the Hofstadt Precision Egg Center. May eleventh, from one to four P M. Just wanted to make people aware of that.
I already know, it's probably very important to go to.
It's always a pretty important meeting, and, and sometimes it gets, uh, you, you know, lost when it's, when it's at Carrington or, or virtually. And, and it's usually right in the middle of planting season, uh, so it's very difficult for producers and people in the agricultural industry to. To get there, but, uh, it's always usually well, well-attended, and, and I think it's important for our community.
Try to be there if we can.
Try to be there if we can, you know, last Thursday, we got a new long-range lake level prediction from the National Weather Service. And, you know, and all along, they've kind of been giving us that fifty percent chance of, of fifty-one, well, or fifty point something. And Thursday's elevation outlook, um, is ninety-five percent, uh, chance of hitting fifty-one seven. Which is about a four and a half foot increase from where we started at this spring. And that would certainly be a record inflow, and, um. And that's from April twenty-fifth to September thirtieth. With the calculation of the state outlets operating at three hundred and fifty U V P per second.
And I'm sure they're not gonna be able to start the outlets in quite a while until the Cheyenne starts to calm itself down too, because there's plenty of water running at one.
There, there's a lot of parameters that they have to meet before they're, they're started in operational. No.
Is there anything?
Oh, there's water out there.
Well, this is, uh, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but I heard that, that they're gonna have to start doing controlled releases from the Bald Hill at some point too, because there's so much water behind it. They built the dikes up in Valley City, so it's gonna be a while until we can start.
They're, they're doing that now.
That's what I, I thought, I heard that quickly, so it's gonna be a while until we're able to start moving some of water around the lake, so. Yeah, it's amazing how much difference a year can make.
Incredible.
A month, basically, a month ago, it looked like we were getting, it was a nice thought, and everything was looking halfway decent. Then all of a sudden, you put six inches of moisture on the basin and a pump there.
Right.
Yes.
So.
So.
But anyway, if, if you're interested in, in attending, I myself is the representative from the Devils Lake Basin. Bill Williams is the appointed representative from Ramsey County, Dick Johnson, uh, city mayor is appointed for the city of Devils Lake. And then I think there's, uh, Joel Anderson is the Towner County representative, I think Mike Stephan is the Benson County representative. And it kinda goes all the way down the line, um, you believe list of. People and representatives on that committee is on the governor's website under, under upboards and appointments, so. Um, I think there's a representative, uh, legislator from upper and lower, I think, uh, Senator Elkie is our representative on that. And, uh. I'm not sure who is downstream, and it used to be Bill Devlin, but I'm not sure if he's still on there or not.
Okay, can I get the other one? Let's make a present film, so we don't fall off. Hey, anything else?
Yeah.
Good to go, okay, visitors and delegations, you people, anybody wanna? It's here to watch, okay. Uh, portfolios, start with Commissioner Holt.
Um, Lisa's obviously was brought out, uh, recorded off, they said, uh, the file stuff is going good. Can't remember the, of our, I was there. But they've been going well, um. I didn't make the last meeting for the. Fair board, but it sounds, I talked to a couple of people, it sounds like they're gonna, as far as raising the money, they got the lady involved that was doing the. For the grants, they're supposed to have a plan for that. Lake access, everything's normal, except the blue landing, they're gonna obviously be put in until. Ice is off, they said completely off, but they always get that question, well, this side of the lake, over the other side of it, absolutely not. And too much damage a couple of years ago, so that. We were actually looking to extend the dock, but I think with the water coming up, we'll probably be good there, and that will save some money. Other than that, and then the daygraft, uh, the sewer, for cleaning all those, uh, landings. Go for that. Hit, all right.
Okay.
Yeah, seen the rails going fine, at the jail, we're expecting the, the, expected the tenth and eleventh of this month. The new captain's doing very well, so happy with that, so. And they have worked with the, uh, June College, or at, at Google State College, you get the C O program going for a fall semester class, so.
Very good.
Yeah.
I don't know all the particulars yet, any details, but.
Are they still going to be coming to us for some startup fund possibly, or?
I couldn't get that answer, I guess, I asked the question, but. Still got up in the area, so.
I know I got on the twenty, that was a lot of work at jail.
Good.
You decide, please regard.
Definitely, uh, difficult to find higher tal- helping. Ready? That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Frith.
No, great, Duffin, it's gonna be a busy spring with all this water, I know that.
Short and sweet, I like it. Uh, from my perspective, um, I think here, I, I, I was not able to attend social services last month, I was on the, so I'm not quite sure. Uh, it wasn't anything too pressing there on the agenda. Uh, it's actually been fairly quiet overall on portfolio side of things, um, for central housing, uh, we had our. Not annual meeting, but we had a special meeting to, uh, okay, fund release, uh, from HUD, so we got that taken care of. We got enough, uh, legal opinion from the state's attorney, so I think everything's good there with HUD, so, uh, we're entering contracts with the other counties we work with. Uh, so everything seems to be going well there, um. Trying to think, on the portfolios, what else I got? Everything's been pretty quiet. Lastly, I would just, uh, from my perspective, uh, like to, uh, and I don't know if it's popular or not, but. Uh, publicly think, even though things didn't end well for Commissioner Wakefield, uh, ex-commissioner Wakefield, still publicly thank him first time on the commission. You know, he still did spend six years here, and, uh, and, uh, even though I'm sure he's obviously not happy able to help things, and didn't have anything like that, but. Still, you know, thank him first time, uh, public service is always difficult, so. But just from my personal perspective, what we got? From that, anything else for the good of the order? Seeing nothing, we have a motion to adjourn. We have a motion, we have a second, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye, aye.
Pull the same sign, we are adjourned, I'm gonna cut the gavel softly. Because I don't like going to say loud for twenty years.